Good evening, I'm Alice Carlson, President of the League of Women Voters of Coos County. Welcome to all of you. This forum is a voter service project of the League. I want to thank all of the committee members and volunteers who helped make this forum possible, and also our co-sponsor, which is the North Bend Library. Also, the League is grateful to the city of North Bend for allowing us to use this room. There will be a video recording made and it will be available for viewing on the League's website as soon as we can get it up. And finally, special thanks tonight to our moderator, retired Circuit Court Judge Paula Bechtold, for doing not only this voter service, but yeoman service, doing voter service for us for many events this year. This has been a busy time for the League. Coos County League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. Our mission is to encourage the informed and active participation of citizens and government, to increase the understanding of major public policy issues, and to influence public policy through education and advocacy. The League does take political action on issues on which members have studied and reached agreement. Action positions can be developed at the national, state, or local level. The League never supports or opposes any political party or any candidate for elective office. We invite you to consider membership in the League. Information about in-membership is available in the lobby. There are also forums for voter registration, although we are past the deadline for voting in this election, there's always another election. And information about how to learn more about what's on your ballot. Tonight, we will first hear from the candidates for the North Bend City Council. During the second half of our forum, we will hear from candidates for Mayor. The League has developed a fair process for this forum. All of the candidates have agreed to abide by the ground rules, and several of those rules also apply to you, our audience. We've asked you to not bring campaign signs and clothing into the auditorium. We're requiring that applause and any other audible response be held until the end of the forum. We also require that you shut off your cellphone, and you may not record, photograph, or tape this event. A recording will be posted on the League's website within a few days. Thank you, everyone, for abiding by these rules. I do need to explain that although we have microphones, they don't help you and the audience, they are only for the recording. And so if you're not hearing the candidates up here, you just, you need to use those tried and true things of saying, "I can't hear you," or raising your hand, or cupping your ear, or whatever you need to be comfortable, because microphones kind of tend to make us not aware that we need to project. You've been given a form to write a question for the candidates. I know many of you have already turned in your questions. I see Francis waiting through the pile over here. If you have at any time another question that you want to ask, raise your hand and Abigail, our page, will pick them up from you. The moderator is going to submit as many questions to the candidates as time allows. Your questions may be rewritten, or revised, or merged with other questions at the discretion of the screeners or the moderator. And now it's time to hear from the candidates. Our moderator, Paula Bechtold, will do introductions and explain the procedures.
And as Alice already mentioned, the North Bend City Council candidates will go first, approximately from now until 8 o'clock, and then we will hear from the candidates for Mayor. Each candidate will have two minutes to make introductory statements to you all, and then we will move to questions. If the question specifies both or all candidates, the moderator, that's me, will determine the order in which candidates will respond, and I intend to have them take turns. They will each have one minute to respond. If a question is addressed to a particular candidate, that candidate will have one minute to respond. Opposing candidates will have 30 seconds to respond. The candidate to whom the question was originally addressed may have 30 seconds for a rebuttal. Candidates may also submit questions to the screeners on the same written question form used by the audience. Each candidate will have one minute for closing remarks to summarize their qualifications. Following the forum, candidates are invited to stay a few minutes to answer questions from individual audience members. Now, it's my pleasure to introduce briefly the first, the candidates for City Council. Sitting next to me is, they're seated alphabetically. Next to me is Jenny Jones. Jenny Jones came here at the end of 2013, after almost 20 years as an engineer and manager at software startups. She is a small business owner focusing on data analysis and other IT services. She has served on the North Bend Budget Committee as a citizen volunteer since 2019. John Ezra Shireman has lived in North Bend most of his life, graduating from North Bend High School. He studied at Lane Community College and Southwestern Oregon Community College, eventually earning his bachelor's degree in professional management. He has performed in various musical endeavors alongside equally diverse technical and engineering training, volunteer, and employment experiences. Barbara Schultz has worked in public school systems for 14 years and is currently a special education teacher. She has lived in North Bend for more than a decade. There is a fourth candidate whose name will appear on your ballot, Larry Garboden. He was invited to participate this evening, but chose not to. All right, and the first question will be addressed. We'll again go alphabetically to Jenny Jones. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for keeping me in order. Yes, each candidate gets to make an opening statement. I read that to you, but it didn't register. They each have two minutes, and so we'll go ahead and start with Jenny Jones, since she is alphabetically first.
Okay. Should I start, or is there, okay. As candidates, we have a lot of "I" statements. In particular, "I know what's broken, and I know how to fix it." But council work is a "we." It is a small team we've elected to make decisions on our behalf, and most of the time, if not all of the time, those decisions are made without the information the council would actually like to use to make that decision. That's strategic decisions. That means that collaborating together, incorporating as many perspectives as possible as they analyze and make their choices, is how to do that work most effectively. Many heads are better than one. The future is cloudy, and so when you incorporate your perspectives, a little wisp of that cloud pulls away so that you can look into the future more clearly. That's why it's so important, and that's why I believe that your team habits are far and away the most important thing that you can bring to a council like this. Listening, checking your assumptions, and most importantly, putting the team before your personal agenda. You can bring your questions and your concerns, but the team is the most important. Now, I believe that other skills help. Other skills help, being good with numbers, knowing how public budgets work. Those are all great. But the truth is that our North Bend public servants, our city workers right now, are well-versed at teaching us how to do that. And so for me, my experience with doing strategic decision-making and all the volunteering I've actually done out here, whether it was Master Gardeners or at the library for resume-building skills, I was able to make better decisions and find better decisions when many heads were put together. So that's what I bring to the table, strong team skills. Thank you.
John?
My name is John Ezra Shireman, and I would like to be your City Councilperson. And I have a very diverse experience in both volunteer, employment, and education. And I think that that would be well-suited to the challenges that we're going to face the next City Council. And I believe, I agree that it's a teamwork effort, and that I would really like to be part of that team. And I think that my experiences would be valuable. I have a lot of technological experience in things like hydroacoustic technology and automated test of circuit boards and things like that. And they're niche businesses. That's the kind of thing I hear that we want to bring into North Bend. Not, we can't, we're not going to get Microsoft down here. But we can get all kinds of little things that we don't even know what they are, because everything that's going on has to interface with technology. And when they do, they have to have people that are skilled in bringing what the old way of doing things up into the technologically savvy way of doing things. And that's just a whole world of opportunity there. And, okay, well, and so I did teach electronics at SWAC, and I worked hydroacoustic technologies in the U District of Washington, in Seattle, which was very interesting, and automated testing. So I think that that would be a big plus. I think we've got a good team. I like the administration that's here currently, and I really look forward to working with them with the people here in North Bend.
Good. And Barbara?
Yep, thanks. I'm Barbara Schultz. I moved to North Bend in 2012 for a job, and I stayed, because I love it here. The first group of kids that I taught were, it was at Hillcrest, and it was that, the year it was kindergarten through 4th grade. So I think about those 4th graders now, and the fact that they're 19 and 20, and they are voters now, which is really exciting. And they are going to be active citizens. And the idea of people being active citizens is really important to me, and so I think about it a lot. Again, people kept coming up to me and saying, "Why do you want to be on City Council?" And I had to think about it, and it has to do with, like, running into people and being part of a community and making sure that the town that you live in is prospering and growing, and I want to be a part of that. I bought a house here. Again, I want to make sure that I do my part. I also think that as a teacher, I collaborate daily, and so I work with a group of people that sometimes I don't agree with, but I still work with them. And I try my best to be a really good listener, and making sure that I don't have all the answers, and I'm not going to be the best when I start. But I think it's, I'm a good team member, and I know that I would like to be a part of the team. So that's why I want to be on City Council. I do think that looking at our, when I moved here in 2012 versus now, all of the changes and all of the improvements, and seeing people, when I go to the store and talking to my former students, is like what I love about North Bend. And so I think that I would be a great team member, because I've kind of organized, and I also think that even though I don't want to do this by myself, I want to be part of the team that does it and that works and improves North Bend.
And now we will start the questions. And again, what I'm planning to do is to rotate. Hopefully, I will treat everybody fairly. Each candidate will have, will have a chance to answer each question, and they will have one minute each. And I did mention, I want to try to mention to all of them ahead of time, if you don't have anything to say or to add, you can just comment, and that you are not required to use a full minute if you don't have a full minute's worth of response after hearing what the people ahead of you may have said.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
What time signals are we going to get? A 30-second and any more, or just a 30-second? That's fine, thank you.
Good question. And here's, the first question will be addressed to Jenny first, and she will have one minute, and then John will have one minute, and Barbara will have one minute, if you want to take the whole time. And then we will start with the next question. We'll go to John first, and then Barbara, and then Jenny, and rotate around that way. So here is the first question. What is the reason you chose to run for City Council? And what qualities and skills do you have that would benefit the council and the residents of North Bend?
Okay. So I happened to find out that with Oregon's transparency laws, there's budget committees in every city, and you can volunteer for them. So I put an application in, and for the last three years, I've been doing that. And at the end of this, this past year, a couple of councilpersons and one of the chiefs asked me if I would run, because I'm a good collaborator. What I took that to mean is that I ask questions so that they're answerable. I put collaboration before everything. And I've gotten that from my work experience and my volunteering experience, where I just know that team solutions are always better when we incorporate one another's thoughts. Even when we're in deep disagreement, your perspectives are always enhanced when you can peel back the emotions and pull the information out. Thank you.
John?
I decided I should run for North Bend City Council when I was looking at the situation in general, and I thought, someone needs to step up and run for these positions. And then I looked at myself, and that would be me. So I followed my own advice. And I grew up in this town, I love this town, and I'm a senior citizen, and I know what the challenges are for young families and senior citizens. And I think we need to keep North Bend livable for the people that are here, and also attract people, new jobs, and the world is at our doorstep. We have one of the most livable places on the whole planet, really. And we're quite fortunate, and I feel fortunate every day just for living here. Thank you very much.
Barbara?
Like I said, I bought a house two years ago, and so I'm planning on living here forever. And so I took a look, and I thought about kind of how I could help improve, not just at the elementary school that I work at, but just locally, and just getting into learning more about my community, and being aware that I am not as knowledgeable as I would like to be. And so I took time to say, I would like to learn more and be a part of a team that helps kind of North Bend grow and change. And I know that on City Council, things are already in motion, and so I would be joining kind of that motion, and hopefully, again, learning from the skills that I have when I join, because right now, I don't feel like I have as many skills as some other people, but just listening and learning from the other committee members, and learning to be, kind of collaborate and a teammate, and helping, again, some of my ideas hopefully would help the town.
All right, the next question, we'll start with John. What do you see as top priorities for the city?
Well, my own personal view aside, when I was canvassing for the signatures, there was one issue that came up above all of the others. And that was the homeless issue. And I've thought about this a lot, and talked to a lot of people about it. And we need to solve the homeless problem, and not just try to get rid of the homeless people, or shuffle them off to another city, or something like that. We need to, I, so I think that was the biggest issue. Personally, I'd like the idea of attracting the niche industries to North Bend. They would love it here, and because of the livability. And that would be it.
And Barbara?
I do think that homelessness is an issue. I think that it's not just our issue, it's the United States' issue. I also think that safety is a big issue for people feeling safe in their homes, feeling safe with their belongings. And so I know a lot of people worry about some of that. And so I think those two things kind of coincide with the idea of, you know, how are we helping our community, and how are we thinking larger picture and figuring out what other cities and what other towns are doing, and hoping to make sure that, because again, I don't know how to solve those problems. And again, I think that they're really tough, tough problems to be having. And in today's world, we need to work together and try and figure out ways to feel safe and to help people that need to be helped.
And Jenny?
So yeah, homelessness is the word you hear most often, but I feel like there's a three-pronged thing in here. It's that we have a lot of vacant housing and commercial and residential housing, because people park their tax shelters here, and they're not contributing. And that leads to a more exacerbated situation for affordable housing out here. And I'm not talking about housing, free housing for very poor people. I'm talking about hearing from professionals in the hospital, at the BLM, and all these, the school, where people take jobs here, and they can't find a place to rent, and they can't find a place to buy. And the third piece is that, whether we like it or not, there's no affordable housing across America. So more and more of us are becoming modern nomads. And those three things are what we're calling right now homeless because of all three of those things. So I think that those are the three issues that create some opportunities. Thank you.
And now, the next question will be addressed first to Barbara. How does the role of a City Councilor work with the role of Mayor and City Administrator in North Bend?
Again, I think that the committee meets, and then we talk about budgeting, we talk about ordinances and resolutions, we attend City Council meetings, and I assume that the Mayor kind of leads us. She is the voice that, or they are the voice that kind of guides us and leads us in our discussions. I think that the City Planner or the City Manager is the person that kind of has to do, or helps. Let's think of it like an octopus, where we are the head, we are the head, and then he is the arms that kind of, we make the ordinances, and then he has to kind of follow them. He's the one that kind of makes those decisions.
Jenny?
So it's a team. I feel like the Mayor is not only the, a member of the council, but the Mayor and the Administrator are the face of the city. I know that this administration, through the work of largely the two of them and the, and city staff have brought, I think, over $6 million into our coffers because of their efforts to reach our federal representatives and our state representatives. And I think that's a huge job, so I think the Mayor's job is much bigger in that way. That's the face, and they need to reach out. But we're a team, and we have to pay attention to understanding each of our perspectives and integrating them, because we only have complicated problems to solve. That's it. So we have to pay attention to the team part first.
All right, and so now it's Jenny's turn to answer the next question first. Oh, I'm sorry, John. See, you got to keep me in line.
Yes, yes.
John?
Thank you. I've been reviewing the videos online, North Bend City Council meetings, and I'm really favorably impressed with how things are running. People tend to assume what in business school they call the hero-manager type of situation, where you have the boss on top, and everything goes through the boss, and then back down. Well, that's inefficient. And the one thing I really like seeing is that people are allowed to do their jobs. And now, sometimes you receive criticism for that, because, "Oh, you're letting David Milliron have too much authority." No, you're not. That's his job, and he's doing a good job. So I think you pick good people and you let them do their jobs. And that's, that's a different management style. It's more like the Matrix management style, and thank you.
All right, now we're back to Jenny answering the next question first. And this is, what steps should the City Council take to increase the availability of affordable housing?
So there's something that, I think I have right, I may have wrong, but I believe that we acquired the property, the old hospital. And I'm a big fan of very long-term leases on public land, not selling the public land, because once it's sold, it's not yours anymore. So what I would love to see, at least as part of a project, is that we started looking for developers who figured out how to build something there in that hospital, because I think it has to be demolished, but make that some kind of stacked housing building in North Bend, where their lease was long enough for them to make their money back, but we created a bunch of housing opportunities that were focused on, maybe some for really low income, but mostly for middle income, because I think that's the biggest need for us. People are moving away because they can't find housing for the job they have here. That's a serious problem.
John?
Can you repeat the previous question?
The question is, what steps should the City Council take to increase the availability of affordable housing?
Oh, great. I agree with that about the old, you call it hospital side. And I've heard talking about another school property that's available, and the ideas that have been going around about transitional housing, and low, well, not low-income housing and affordable housing. They're all important. If we just go for the high-dollar properties, it's attractive, but we end up with these sports shops and all the fast-food restaurants and everything, and they need housing. And some other cities like Denver has dropped out of the top because they just don't have affordable housing. And we can avoid that problem, because we're getting in on, we're early in the game. The opportunity is on its way here. So we have, we need to do it right the first time. And don't sell, don't sell. Thank you. I agree with what Jenny said about not selling.
And Barbara?
I agree with a lot of what has already been said. I do think that there are things in motion that are happening. The old banger building, I've heard some things about building happening there potentially. I just think we need to think about space, and what is available, and what that looks like. And then I don't think it's an easy question. I also think sometimes we think affordable housing means like less than, and I think right now, affordable housing is thinking about what people make wage-wise. And I think a lot of people, what we consider affordable depends on what our job is and what we make. And so I want us to think about the people that need to have that housing, because now they currently are living with family or in RVs. And so we want to think about getting them into a more stable place.
Yeah.
All right, the next question goes first to John. Recognizing the local housing shortage, what is your opinion on North Bend adopting a more detailed policy regarding short-term vacation rentals, less than 30 days?
Oh, that's a good question, too. Short-term vacation rentals, that's, there's two sides to that. One thing, it's good, and the downside is that it sits empty for most of the time. And there's, I notice some, some areas are putting together, like tours and package tours of this or that, whatever they happen to have in their area. And they incorporate, you know, the short-term housing in their thing, so they got a rotation on it. And so it's not as much property since it's empty with that approach as just privately-owned vacation, re-vetation property. So yeah, it's, it's a problem, and I think it needs to be addressed.
Barbara?
I do think that it kind of comes to do two different sides. I have had a lot of friends who've been travelers with the hospital, and usually those contracts are for three months or more. And so they look for places that are furnished, that they can come, they can stay, and they can go. And I think they are an intimate part of this community. And so having that available is important, so that under 30 days would potentially hinder that. I do think also, though, we need to think about how many we have and what they're being used for. I do think also, though, we need to think about how many we have and what they're being used for. It is an interesting concept to think about people needing homes and places sitting empty. And so again, I think that it is a complicated question.
Jenny?
So I think, I don't know what's possible, honestly. But I think that some kind of policy focusing on minimizing vacancy makes the most sense. For example, if there's an Airbnb where there are people in there 50 weeks out of the 52 years, that means they're eating here, that means they're spending their money here. And that means that all the people in those jobs that would otherwise be seasonal are seeing some of that money. So I feel like the way to solve it is through looking at the lens of vacancy. How long is this vacant? It would be better, I, I would love it if we extended through a variety of ways our tourist season so that it was 12 months and that the emphasis on those activities was for middle and working class because that's for us. I would rather that we get to go do something than have a fancy spa for the wives of the golfers down at Bandit. Not that golf, there's anything wrong with that, but I would rather have us enjoying our things. So that's what I would bring to the table. I don't know what's possible, honestly.
All right. And the next question will go first to Barbara. No, Barbara just answered. No, it's you. Okay. Have you served on any citizen advisory committees? How would you recruit people to serve on those committees?
So being a teacher takes a lot of time. And so I've sat on teacher committees. But I have not sat on community committees. Again, teaching takes up a lot of my thoughts, a lot of my time. I do know a lot of parents, I do know a lot of teachers. And through working through a school district for 11 years, I have met hopefully a lot of people and made connections. So I might promote, once I, once I work on a committee, I might ask some people to join me.
Jenny?
So it probably sounds silly, but I loved being on the budget committee. I love that stuff. And whenever I talk to people about what I heard on the budget committee, I think that I can draw them in and get them interested. And I love doing that. I love it when we are talking about our place, our community. So the biggest thing is to, you know, get out there and talk to people. And I think that that's a big part of being a council member. It's beyond the meetings. It's beyond kind of even putting the thinking into it. Part of that job is to communicate outward in as many ways as you can think of. So that's, that's how I would try to do it.
John?
Well, I have not served on any civic budget committees per se. But I've been involved in many volunteer organizations. And, and worked with the people on what there was to work with at the time. And I'm definitely a team player. And I've seen the value in having these committees and respecting them and attracting people to participate in our civic situation here. And we need to bring in more, more people to get involved in the city. And so anyway, that's it.
All right. The next question goes first to Jenny. What input does the city have into decisions made about the International Port of Cus Bay? Can you comment on your position regarding the proposed North Point development and the proposal for a container facility?
I wish I knew more about that. I know that it's a possibility. I like it way better than the pipeline because the pipeline seemed, you know, it's explosive material. And it's not a lot of jobs, honestly, looking, looking at those kind of projects. So on the surface, I like it. I, there's a big impact. From what I understand, you know, there's upwards of, I don't know, 10,000 people or places that need to be built for people to live. So I think there's a lot of stuff to be worked out about it. But I like it a lot better than some of the other alternatives that I've known about. I don't know a lot.
John?
Okay. I think we really dodged a bullet on the Jordan Coe project. That was only 150, 160 jobs, something like that. And they were all, they're just go-nowhere jobs. So they're probably paid okay, but there was no future. And that's what you got. And it would, it would tie up so much of our resource in the bay, both with the pipeline and the facility itself. And we don't even want to go into the pollution aspects. I agree that we, that's part of our attraction here with our, our positive vision around making a beautiful place that has employment. And so, yeah, the bay is a big part of that. We need to respect the industry that's already here, the fishing industry. And what lumber industry we have to, we've got to keep them happy, too. So, yeah.
Barbara?
I am not as knowledgeable as I would like to be about that topic. And so again, I don't know, again, what the city council, how the role of, of that with what we are talking about. So I would have to do a lot of reading and catch up on that topic.
Me, too.
Right. And now the next question goes first to John. What are you thought, what are your thoughts on the city adopting a uniform housing code and enforcement process to require that rental properties be kept in good condition? What provisions would you support and ensure that rental tenants live in housing that is safe, mold-free, with adequate plumbing and electrical systems that are up to code?
Okay, that's a good question, too. On the surface, it would sound like, yes, we want everything to be top-notch. But in reality, I don't think that is the primary focus. Now, when we're talking about the need of affordable housing and low-cost housing and transitional housing, some of the housing that's, that's there is not going, we don't want to curtail that to meet a spec that looks good on paper, but, you know. Personally, I had a person living in my garage for several years because she was working and she couldn't find a place. And she had pets. And she's got her place now and she's set up. But I don't know what would have happened if she couldn't have found a place. It was really, it was really bad. And so I would not, I would not say that's a top priority.
Barbara?
Can you repeat the question again?
The question is.
Sorry.
No problem, no problem. What steps should the city? No, that's not it.
This was just a test.
What are your thoughts on the city adopting a uniform housing code and enforcement process to require that rental properties be kept in good condition? What provisions would you support to ensure that rental tenants live in housing that is safe, mold-free, with adequate plumbing and electrical systems that are up to code?
So my brain focused on the last part. Again, I think that why would we not want rentals to be mold-free and up to code? That seems very logical to me. I think that there's also that backlash of renters also treating properties correctly. And so knowing that there are rules for, on both sides and ways to monitor that seems important. It also makes me sad that, that people are living with mold and have to have kind of the city step in or have guidance on what is expected for people to live nicely and healthily.
Jenny?
So I think it's really important to adopt uniform codes and in particular for rental properties. Because for the most part, most of us, if we look in the spectrum of our life, we're going to spend some time in rental properties as an adult as we begin. And when you don't have universal expectations that are high enough that invite people with working in middle-class jobs to stay in those places, that actually guts your future economic potential. Because you have to have a place to live where you work. We're not, we're not in a suburban environment where we can drive one or two hours to some place. We're here or not. So I think it's really important. I am not well-versed at all. I am completely ignorant, in fact, of what the city could or would require. Like, I don't know the legalistics of it all. But I do know that it is a very important piece in drawing and maintaining economic potential for us.
And the next question goes first to Barbara. What services are inadequate in this, in the city to deal with mental health crises, addiction, littering, neighborhood safety? And what would you do on the city council to address that situation?
That was a lot of stuff.
Yeah.
So again, what services don't we have, I think is the question. And so again, I'm just thinking of all the things. So again, thinking about the fact that we have like they mentioned garbage, they mentioned addiction. So again, the amount of addiction specialists or people that could help volunteer and help with talking to people with addictions, the idea that we don't have enough people to like see their doctors here. I think that just services in general, having like mental health services come in, having more counselors, having more people move in. But again, that goes to the question of where would they live if they moved here? And so again, I think it's a complicated question.
And Jenny?
So I think there's real, this is a real place where, at least for the moment, we have to draw grants to us for official city services where we have people and, and, you know, kind of paid to do things. On the one hand. On the other hand, I think there's a lot of room for volunteer-based projects or maybe even incorporating some of the modern nomads. You know, you can, you can kind of shift around if you make yourself known. And you can do some services for the city, like the litter stuff. And I know that companies like Amazon take great advantage of this nomadic population that we have. Where there, they may not have enough to get housing somewhere, but they have a vehicle, they have a license, they are plugged into the system, and they want day work. So I think that there's some opportunities for creating deeper volunteer services.
And John?
Okay. Well, we come back to the homeless issue with the mental health. A good percentage of the people out there on the street are mentally disabled in some way. And that needs to be dealt with. We need to have housing for the mentally ill who are not going to get a job, they're not going to be retrained, they're mentally ill. And we used to have a mental hospital that went closed. And we need to replace that with something so we can get the people off the street who are mentally ill. And that will vastly contribute to the homeless problem as well. Now, the littering, I don't see that as being a terrible problem here in North Bend. I think people are pretty conscientious. I pick up, it's, it's to the point where if I see a little bit of litter, I'll just pick it up because there's that little. And, and so I think, again, we're very, very fortunate in a lot of these issues because it's worse elsewhere. About everywhere else. But, okay, thank you.
We actually are pretty much done with the questions. So I don't think anybody in the audience will object to having a little longer break. So what we're going to do now is have closing statements from each candidate. And we're going to start, since we started from this end, with the opening, we're going to start at the opposite end and let Jenny go first. And she will have one minute. Barbara? Excuse me, Barbara, back on the end. Barbara will have one minute to tell you why you should vote for her.
You should, I guess I should, you should vote for me. I deal with goals and looking at kind of year-long measurable goals in my job daily. And I think about how to reach those goals and being able to know that some goals you're going to meet and some goals you're not. And I think city council, because we're trying to have kind of city and annual goals that they're working on, even though it's different than at elementary school level, at a very small kind of academic level. It's still the idea of where we want to see our city, where we want to go with our city. And the idea of, of being part of a team that sets goals and are looking at the goals that have already been set. It really motivates me to want to be a part of that.
And John?
Okay. Can you repeat the question?
It's just a closing statement. Why should people vote for you?
Okay. I think if you want positive results, you need to have a positive vision. And I think we're in a great place. We don't have to work very hard for that positive vision here because we're sitting in a good spot. The climate change so far has not worked out against us. It's we have these heat domes and it makes it even more exciting. And so I think that while my parents did their, their whole adult lives here giving back to the city as instructors. And I feel now it's my chance to give back to the city as well. So I'd just be really pleased and we're glad to be part of the team here at North Bend.
And Jenny?
So when I look around, I see intelligent faces with concerns and hopes for this community that we share. And we are literally neighbors and in it together. And to me, collaboration is the most powerful piece of this. It's the most powerful piece I'm interested in because I always find it fun and bettering. But consider that even though we look at elections in terms of winners and losers usually, wouldn't you agree that all of us are better and have expanded our perspectives because of what we've all learned today? And some of us will not make it to be elected, but we're still better for that. So what I hope happens tonight is that everyone in this room has a sparking night within them to consider doing this kind of service, to consider trying, to consider encouraging your friends and family to try this kind of service. Thank you.
And thank all of you for putting your necks out and doing this. We appreciate it.